Good to go. All right. 5:15, let's call the workshop to order, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer is absent, and Mayor Monge?
Here. Thank you. Motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Wong? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. One topic up tonight, community center next steps and state grant discussions, and I'm going to turn that over to Finance Director Dan Winnick.
Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. We're here one more time for another workshop on the community center and their next steps. And from our last meeting, we've got a little bit of direction, and we wanted to take a look at the grant. Just as kind of a reminder, our format that we've adopted is that there'll be a little staff presentation, city council questions and answers, public comments. We kind of develop our next agenda, and then do a city council wrap-up. This is what we've accomplished or gone through so far. We've had clarification or modification to the grant terms, which we're going to be going back again tonight to get clarification, to make sure that everybody is comfortable with everything. We've had a presentation by the Ramsey County Library here in the North St. Paul. We've completed a request for interest in partnerships at the community center. We went over that last week, and as a result, or two weeks ago. As a result of that, we decided that we really wanted to kind of go back and look at that grant, to make sure that we're comfortable with the terms, get some clarification on some of those terms, and that's what we'll talk about tonight. And then, the next step that we had talked about would be to develop an RFP for community engagement, which we'll touch base on after we've gone through the grant part. So tonight is really a review of the state grant that was attached to your documentation. We need city councils to be very participant in this meeting tonight to identify any clauses or terms that they believe create a potential issue. We are fortunate tonight to have Rodney here from Minnesota Department of Economic, and I'm not going to employment and economic development. And we also have our city attorney, Soren, here to help with any clarification on any of the legal terms. So, I really am going to turn this over to city council to ask questions, and we have either Rodney or Soren to try to make some clarifications. And at the end of it, if we need to submit a document to deed with our questions, so we get actual written responses and clarifications on how the grant can be modified, if that's necessary, we'll end up doing that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to city council, and hopefully, we have the questions, and we go through this grant, and we make sure that everybody's concerns are addressed. So who would like to start tonight?
I'll start. I'm the one who asked for this meeting to be put together, so thank you, Dan, for officiating.
That's kind of what it's, yeah.
The primary reason and function for why I wanted to get this document in front of all of us, and have all of us pre-read it, and go through it, and come in here with questions, is that there's, legal documents are a wonderful thing. They can be misinterpreted, or read, or heard, or determined, however you may choose to want to take a look at it. So, I wanted to just get the bodies that are here together to talk through some of the sections that may or may not have concern. I've heard, you know, lots of different rumors floating around, whether it be up here, within the community of their interpretation, so I just wanted everyone to be able to speak what they had, and gain clarity. For me, I have two sections that I have questions over. One is Section 5 dot 11 regarding prevailing wages. And I talked through that with Brian, and having read this in other contracts that I've signed in other cities, I just wanted to make sure I completely understood that it doesn't have anything to do with the city, but more or less puts us on notice for making sure that the contractors that are used do pay the prevailing wages. And I did not go in and look up all the Minnesota statutes that it listed into there. I don't know if it requires that we only allow award contracts to union and/or non-union.
In my experience with prevailing wages, that it does not differentiate between union and non-union, so that's not the issue. But out on the Minnesota State's website, they have prevailing wages documented, and it is a requirement on any state-funded construction project that you utilize prevailing wages. So that would have to be incorporated into any one of our contracts. And then the onus is on us to get from the contractor on a regular basis, usually monthly when they give their pay applications, their prevailing wage documentations, and we need to check those over. And we check them in comparison to what the state's website has onto it. We would be, our contract, we really should, when we set the contract, we would have the contract be date-specific, if it's a multi-year contract, to have it that it's the prevailing wage at the time, that the execution of the contract, because prevailing wages usually do change. They usually change about May 1st of every year, because that's when the union contracts are up. So it is not for union or non-union, but it is prevailing wage, and it is our responsibility to make sure that that's adhered to with our contractors. And to Soren or Rodney, if any clarification or difference on that?
No, nothing to add. The prevailing wages really is not a union versus non-union issue, and there's no requirement that you use one sector versus the other. It is a statutory requirement, so it's one of those, in my opinion. I'm not necessarily a fan of template, but that's what it is. It's going to be in the contract. That's not, it's a non-negotiable, and it is what it is.
And I appreciate that from both of you, and I read and interpreted accordingly. I have signed contracts where it required union only. So that was why I wanted to just gain clarity on that point.
Yep.
Okay. And really, the only other one that jumps out at me is very, towards the very top, the useful life. On my document, it's left blank, but I'm under the impression that we submitted 25 years, or 30 years, or we had, we did something. That's the only other piece that I would like to amend, to be no greater than 20, adding the 125%, which would make it 25 years, if my public school math worked right.
Absolutely, and May?
Yes. On that particular piece, when it comes to property, we typically say 30 years, but if it's 20, 25, it's totally up to you guys on what the property, how you want to do that, when it comes to the useful life. Because I've seen it, even though it was not building-related, I've seen it as low as 10.
Ooh.
But it's more or less like for a field, for baseball, or something like that, it's not necessarily real property.
Gotcha.
So have we submitted documentation to the state for 25 years, plus one, plus 125? There's been conversation around, or was it 30? There's been conversation around the commitment to 37 and 1/2 years.
When we initially were figuring out potential costs for running the building, that was part of the formula that we used. We initially thought it was anywhere between 25 to 35 years, and so we just used 30 down the middle, which where it came up with that 37. And then with clarity through Rodney, we found out that it didn't even have to be that long.
Okay. Just, because the document that I'm looking at is, everything is blanks.
Right.
So I just wanted to gain clarity on that, and I appreciate that, and I guess my comfort zone is 20 tops, if there's room, wiggle room. Other than that, those were my two big buckets. With that, I'll pass.
I have a quick question, if we could. Section 2.3 of the manual, it says, "Operating of real property and facility." It's kind of a general statement. "The grant recipients shall operate the real property, and if applicable, the facility or cause it to be operated as blank, or for such other use, as the Minnesota Legislature may from time to time designate." Could you maybe talk to that? Does that mean that they can step in and use this facility for, as they see, or?
That was 2.03?
That's correct.
I just want to get to that, to see exactly. Give me one second, sorry.
Page 5 of the grant.
Okay, I think mine's different, only because I have it on PDF. Looking it on the computer, it's not actually 5. Okay, I'm almost there, right there. Okay, so the operation of the real property and facility?
Mm-hmm.
What it's basically saying is, it's going by what you have is the legislation, so you're going to operate it as the St. Paul community, or outreach community center? That's what would usually go right there, because it's going exactly by what's in your legislation. So in your legislation, if I remember right, well, actually, I have it, I didn't even remember right. St. Paul Community Multicultural Outreach Center, so that's what you're going to operate this project as, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So it's just basically saying that you're gonna, after you get it renovated, whatever construction or design, that that's what the facility is going to be operated. It's not going to be on the side, you know, Toyota cars are being sold there. It's going to be exactly what you are using it for, and it looks like it's a multicultural gathering facility, maybe gym, library, veterans drop-in center. So that's what you're going to operate it as, as exactly what's in the legislation, and nothing else.
So if I could, so the first part of it was, "The grant recipient shall operate the real property, and if applicable, the facility or cause it to be operated as," and that's where we fill that in, and then we insert what you just read there?
Actually, I will fill that in after you have, after I've gotten your application, because I'm going to take a lot of the information off your application and fill it in, and then, because I gave you this blank copy just for you to see, but after your application is completed, I'm going to fill it in with the information, and then I'm going to turn around and send it to you all to review. And then, if there are things that, well, you know what, can we change this? We're open to negotiate whatever changes, if there's any changes. And then, after that has been completed, then I would send you, once I got it back from the contracts coordinator, I would send it directly to you for signature, and you could read through everything that's been done.
Yep, and that's for the information that you would enter in, but then, it goes on to say, "Or, for such other use, as the Minnesota Legislature may from time to time designate." That is not what we're operating at. Then it's them saying that they could come in and operate it as something they wanted to operate it at?
No, we're just trying to go by what's in the legislation, how you're going to operate it, and just seeing that you're not going to do anything different than what's being said in the legislation.
Okay.
Yeah, that language could be made clearer, and I understand the concern with it, but when I've dealt with these, traditionally, what that means is, to the point that's being made, is you indicate what it is you want to do with it, you're committing to do it for a certain period of time, should you get the grant. And when the legislation comes through, usually, the legislation parrots whatever you've put in your application, and that's what it's been designated as. The idea isn't 10 years later, the time-to-time, I get the objection on that. I have not seen that they pull the rug out from underneath you and say, "And now you're going to do this." It stays whatever it's been designated as. But if that sentence becomes problematic, we can certainly take a look at that and discuss that. But I haven't seen that be a problem. What it is, is you apply, you say what we're going to do it for. The legislation then says, "Yes, we'll give you the dough for this amount, or for this use," and you're going to commit to that time period. That's what it stands for.
Have you also seen the number of years that you can just choose? That seems like, it's like, we can't seem to get an answer here.
I've really been involved with the number of years. That candidly hasn't traditionally been a problem. These are usually long-term projects, so I, no, I haven't had to fiddle with the number of years. What I would say in general is, the more you ask, the longer it is.
Well, that's why we're trying to figure out, we've asked, or it was asked for 4 and 1/2, what does that number of years mean?
I'm sorry, can you say the question again?
I'm still, I'm trying to figure out the number of years with being blank, and you've gone from, you know, 25, 30, to 10. I, I'm just confused.
Yeah, when it's typically, and it was confusing when I first started, too. And I just looked at real property as almost like being a house, you know? It's usually a 30-year mortgage. Nowadays, it's probably even higher than that. But that was usually the typical, but there are some facilities that can, you know, do it in 20, 25. If you operate exactly what it says in the legislation, for whatever amount of years you end up choosing. When I said the 10 earlier, it was for a baseball field, so you're just more or less doing the grass, and that's not gonna...
That doesn't help me figure out what this actually entails, so.
Because we're dealing with a building here, so it's different.
I don't understand why it's such a hard number to figure out.
I guess, and that's why we're here tonight. What number are you comfortable with? That's why I initially stated no greater than 20. Because the intent of tonight is, anything we're not comfortable with, we make amendments to, and I don't know, Rodney, if it goes back to you, or if it goes back to whomever for the, you know, the nod. But in the event, or if this project goes forward, everybody sitting here has to be comfortable with the wording in the document, is how it sits, so.
That's what I'm trying to get my...
I guess I'll go through my list, then. My first one was exactly what City Manager Brian Frandl said, was the line that had, "From May, time to time designate." It sounds like we would ask for clarity, which I agree with, that we need clarity upon that line. The next thing I have highlighted is the same thing as the Honorable Mayor has been talking about, is that multiple times in the document, there's useful life of the real property. I think we need to nail down what that number would be before any of us could say we were comfortable with it. And I have that highlighted a bunch of times through here. And then, my next question is on Section 301, Section A, for the use contracts. It says, "The purpose for which the use contract was entered into must be a governmental purpose." I was hoping we could get clarification, because I'm not sure exactly what that means as far as this contract.
That whole section on the 301, A, B, and C, would be awesome.
I mean, I take that to simply mean that what we're doing here furthers a governmental purpose, and I think there may be some policy considerations in terms of, do we want to do it or not? But running a rec center for the purposes stated in your grant, in my opinion, clearly satisfy any governmental purpose. Those, that providing opportunities for rec and park and those kind of things, as described in the original, here's what we're going to use the building for, satisfy any form of governmental purpose, or any sort of public expenditure qualification. I think there is the policy decision on whether you want to do that or not, but it satisfies, in my opinion, a governmental purpose.
And then, on the same section, 301, Item G. "If the amount of the grant exceeds 200,000," which this does, "then it must contain a provision requiring the UC to list any vacant or new positions it may have with the state workforce centers, as required by Minnesota statute." Is that something we currently do with all of our open positions, or is this, would this be a burden upon the city?
Well, I interpret this to be not for the city of North St. Paul. These are use, the use contracts. So in other words, if we have an entity providing programming or services that comply with the intent of what the community center is to be, those contracts need to have this language in it, and if they have any, if they fill any positions, or create new positions, they need to report those to, to the workforce center.
Right. The Section 3 is premised on just the first sentence, which says, "Each and every use contract that the grant recipient," which would be the city, "enters into must comply with the following requirements." So I mean, right now, the obvious contract that we have in place would be, say, with the county and the library. That, to me, is a no-brainer, qualifies. If you were to enter into any other sort of contracts for recreation, things like that, it's fine. And then we, there's, it's listing out certain requirements, other requirements that we need to make sure we follow in those contracts in and of themselves.
Because of what's in the building, will the city have to create a UC con, or, pardon the language, I don't know, but because we have the generator and stuff like that there, will, once this is all together, will we have to create a lease back to the city, and then would the city have to?
I apologize, I'm not following a lease back to the city.
Well, there's infrastructure within the building that is maintained and operated by city staff. Once the, if we agree with this contract to the rec center, or the community center, does the community center then have to lease the infrastructure back to the city? Or, so we wouldn't, the city would not fall under the workers, even though part of the city is infrastructure?
Unless, and I've been following this to a point. I have not had, you know, a number of meetings with staff, and I apologize, I'm coming off of a vacation, so I didn't get up to date on all of this, the discussions, but, I mean, the city owns the building, so the infrastructure in there, in my opinion, unless there's some other operation being set up, is going to be owned by the city. There's no leaseback of any of that. That just becomes part of the city's ownership.
Okay, so technically, only, we'll say, 85% of the building is becoming the community center, and that's what must be fulfilled by the governmental purpose?
I'm still not on where the other 15% go.
Well, 100% of the community center isn't going to be used for, leased out as a rec center.
You're talking where the fiber is?
With the fiber, the generator and stuff like that, because, so the city is retaining that for infrastructure. So 100% of the building isn't the community center. You know, 20% is the library, 78% is whatever we might rent it out, the 2% is, stays within the city for the infrastructure part. Will that create a issue at all with this contract, or any of the work clauses?
Not in my opinion.
Okay.
Usually, when I think of lease agreements, and again, it's irrelevant to what's going on here, it's like, if this project was for North High School, and they got a brand-new track, and football field, but they lease it out, have a lease agreement with maybe a semi-pro football team to use that as their home, so then a contract has to be used when it comes to a use agreement. I don't, you guys are not going to have anything like that, that I can think of, where you're going to lease your facility out to another party on an ongoing basis.
Agreed. We just have our backup generator, our fiber, and some infrastructure there, and I wanted to make sure that wasn't going to create a potential legal issue.
No, it's still your building. You still get to, in terms of normal city operations, house certain things that from either an efficiency, or just sort of a common sense, this is where it makes sense to put those. You can do that, assuming it doesn't interfere with any of the terms of the grant, and I haven't seen anything that would constitute that. So you still get to do your normal city operations as a part of this. That doesn't preclude anything. And if it makes sense to house the generator there, that doesn't, in my opinion, that doesn't interrupt the grant. To house your fiber there does not interrupt the grant.
Okay. Awesome. I appreciate that clarification.
I do have one, if you wouldn't mind, while he's looking, is, you mentioned that, because we're not going to run the community center, we're looking at partners to run it. Does that have a problem with it, as far as that?
People that you're hiring, that has nothing to do with a use agreement. Use agreements, you're leasing it out for someone to use, for, again, using that example, North High has a football field, or the hockey arena, but they lease it out to a semi-pro team, or somebody that's going to use it here and there around the high school, you know, along with the high school's not actually using the property. So that's the use agreement.
Are you clear on it? Okay. I'm having trouble, I'm trying to understand it. No, I'm just thinking, I was trying to figure out, so, even though it's, because you said the semi-pro team is using it.
Right.
So, we own the building, but we're not going to be running the community centers, that's somebody else using it. That's different than the, than the football field.
Well, because the football, the, let's say the semi-pro football team is probably going to generate some income, too, under that agreement. People are going to come pay to see them, so...
Community centers usually charge for that, too. What does that?
Right, but is it not open to the, more to the public?
We don't know. That's why we're trying to figure out. We don't know how we're going to run it, because we're not...
It'd have to, if it's a public purpose.
A charging-wise?
I mean, you can charge, but it's still a public purpose.
Okay, all right, that's where I'm getting screwed up, then.
Because basically, when I think of use agreements, I'm thinking someone has the rights right now, so that semi-pro team that's using it, it's our time, because there's no high school football, or high school events going on at the time. That's one of the best examples I can kind of give you.
If a volleyball goes in there, and there, we've had a lot of volleyball people that have asked, so they're charging their people to come in and do volleyball.
Is it a team that's going to constantly always do it, or is it just something that you're doing?
Well, we had one that just left, and they rented it for a couple, for years, and we got a couple that have been asking volleyball, seems to be very popular. So they run their program, and use our gym for their people.
Okay, at least...
That's what I'm trying to figure out, the difference here, because we got these other people that want to come in and start their programs and use it, but they're going to be having their income. If it's the, if it's the theater, if it's the volleyball, if it's all these people, they're going to be making money off of it.
Okay. Then that would be something to consider, then, lease agreement. If it's a particular team, that's going to always be there as well, even though it's going to be a number of groups.
The devil in the details on that, Mayor, like, for example, when Cora was there, would that satisfy the public purpose, in the sense that you are, you know, under the grant agreement? It's a, it's a private entity. If the city ran a rec program, in my opinion, ran a rec program saying volleyball every Tuesday, Thursday night, and charged for it, I don't think that violates any terms of the grant.
And I agree, but these are private ones.
So, so, I mean, let's check the box on that one, right? So then, in terms of, you had a question of, but I felt like you were saying, is the, if we have a management company, for lack of a better words, they're not a user, that's just instead of utilizing public works...
That's, I understood that one, once we got to that point. It was these other groups that are interested, the...
Oh, check the box on that. So then, then there is, you know, to go to the pro football team, if you dial the pro back and just say, "Look, there are entities that exist for the sole purpose," like the Corals and other volleyball clubs, which this is a desired facility, does that satisfy the public purpose side of things? Is it, because it's not run as a community ed thing, it is a higher-level thing? I think that's something we'd have to look into. I don't, I wouldn't want to give a knee-jerk answer on that one right now, but...
And so...
And so far, a lot of those has been people that are doing private, which is the, the theater and these other groups that want to have it.
And I think that's where it does get a little tricky, in terms of, is, is volleyball in and of itself a recreational thing that fits within the terms of the grant application? In my opinion, yes. Is theater also one of those items? Yes, in my opinion. So, the use itself, now, how is it structured and who runs it? I think that is where we'd have to take a look at and understand the details. So, those, those activities in and of themselves, in my opinion, satisfy the terms of what is an allowed activity. How we set it up, who runs it, and all those things, that is a detail we'd have to figure out.
Yeah. And I, and I understand that part. It's just not, it almost seems like it's, North St. Paul's going to run a community center, and I just haven't seen that yet, as far as some of the wording on there when we were talking. So, I just wanted to verify.
It's my understanding that with partners, that we would also submit those partnerships to you at deed, and that would also get an MMB for approval?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. So, it'd be approved on multiple levels, so, okay.
That leads into my next question, and that's section 510(c) and (f). Because we are going, more than likely, the discussion has led to, if this goes through, that we would have someone leasing this from us to run our program, it sounds like those programs have to go before many committees of the representatives and the legislature. Does that have to happen when the House is, when they're in session?
Well, typically, during the grant agreement, whatever you guys decide, you know, leasing out or however you're going to, agreements that you have, it would just be something that we would ask you to provide us beforehand, the different agreements that you sign with people for, and that's basically it. So, we know that, that's one of the things that you do do, that you have an agreement with AAU volleyball or something to that point, that you just have a written agreement with that particular group.
And I agree with that, but this states, "The grant recipient shall not prepare final plans and specifications until it's prepared a program plan and cost estimates for all elements necessary to complete the project, and present them to the chairs of Minnesota State Finance Committee and Minnesota House of Representatives Ways and Means Committee, and the chairs have made their recommendations." And, basically, (c) and (f) do the same. So, the way I read this, even if things go wonderfully, it would be the next session before we could get possible approval from them, because we can, it says, "We cannot prepare final plans until it's been approved by them."
I think everything's set up already for your grant in the legislation. Right now, at this point, it's more or less completing the application and then putting the grant agreement together. If there was something that you wanted to change within your legislation, that's when I know there's going to be people coming in, saying, okay, we're going to have to wait and, you know, get the legislation changed the way you want it. Like, say, for example, like, one thing we had talked about before, the first time we had met, we had talked about possibly moving, but it happened at here, 2300, we were talking about a different location. That would be a legislation, red, legislation change, so then, that would have to go back through your legislator and everything, be rewritten to wherever that different location was going to be, and then, that's when we're looking for approvals and stuff like that, if you wanted to make that change. But if, the way we have it now, if it was staying at the address that we have issued here, and nothing else was being changed within the legislation, then we would just move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, it isn't meant, this agreement is not meant to be monitored by the legislature, where we go back for each and every item. It's, the legislation's been passed, now it's, now it's up to the state agencies to administer it, and we communicate with them. That's how it goes. We don't have to go back to the legislature for each of these things. If we want to change the overall scope of what we're doing, yeah, that changes the legislation. But, the day-to-day, how we administer it, there's a check and balance of, hey, we want to do this, here's what we're thinking of, and we can get feedback on that from the state agencies.
Then, my last question, I believe is somewhat on the same line, is the section 5.26, the third-party beneficiary. Would someone like Kokoro or that fall under that third-party beneficiary clause? Or is that something we don't have to worry about?
He said 5.26.
This doesn't, yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, for this one, yeah, this one is, I don't actually think this affects you at all.
No. They, this has nothing to do with, really, who we're renting it to or leasing it to. Again, it's acknowledging that the state has given us money and is therefore part of a beneficiary. I would, again, put this more in the boilerplate portion of the contract to just acknowledge, it gives them some enforcement rights as a beneficiary of all this, that it's nothing more than that.
Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you. I really appreciate you taking the time to come out here.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you're going to need an ultimate row.
I will need another minute, thank you. I don't think I have any standing questions or concerns.
Okay.
It's, I think, been answered.
I was going to ask you quick, do, is my understanding that you can pay a general contractor wages to serve as the general of the project, but you cannot do it with a, like, city employee? Or is that not correct? Can labor be reimbursed with the grant funds from city employees?
It's never, I don't think I've ever had anything like that happen. Other ones that I've done, that would be something I would have to double-check, but I've never had anything like that.
I mean, they require all sorts of documentation throughout the process, and I didn't know if a city employee did that, or, and that, could you get reimbursed for that labor time? Or does it have to be a general contractor for the project that would do something like that?
Well, because most of the times, it has been a contractor that's done it. Whoever you guys have do the construction or the work, but I don't know if it's necessarily if the city person or not. That one, I'd have to get back to you on, put a note on that one.
So, Brian, for clarity on your question, are you referencing, say, Finance Director Winnick wanted to be the general and run the entire operation, his time? Are you asking, can his time be included in that? Or is the question more along the lines of, we had someone from Public Works do demo work in there, can we reimburse ourselves for that? Is that one of those two scenarios? Is that where you're looking, or am I completely out of base?
Well, part of that, I mean, what if, yeah, Public Works did some of that work, but also, maybe not so much as a general contractor, but let's say a general contractor turned in information, that then we took labor hours to fill out their forms to send that back into the state. Are those hours reimbursable, or does that all need to go back to the contractor to do that work?
And it, it sounds like just kind of maybe smaller, one-off, kind of, projects or something that needs, like, maybe smaller attention or less attention, that would not require, like, maybe a large-scale contractor?
Yeah. I mean, like, a general contractor would look over all the other contractors for whatever work, demo or roof or something, but if, if information was turned in and you just have a form that you're filling out, information that the state needs, would those labor hours, if it was done by a city employee, be reimbursable? There's just a lot of documentation when it comes to grants, as you know, but it would make sense that the contractor would take care of all that, but I just didn't know.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I made a note of that question. I'm going to find out, I've never come across anything like that. It's been typically the contractor, but I'll find out.
Yeah. I guess one thing, as far as, I think, Tim, I have a contract and I have a lawyer, I had them look it over, what is your, you see anything as our lawyer, that, anything that pops up at you as far as contracts or anything like that?
No. I, I consider this to be a standard grant agreement. I mean, keeping in mind that someone's giving you money, and so, a substantial amount. With that comes some strings, and you have to be comfortable with the strings. In terms of the technical terms in there, I have no concerns at all. In terms of, are you comfortable with the commitment? To me, when I've talked to folks about this, there seems to be this, do we want to do this question? And what I don't think we can answer via technicalities in the contract or these documents is, do we want to do it?
Mm-hmm.
And I think...
That's fair.
Once we get to the point of, yes, we're going to do it, these contracts and documents fall into line. But I don't, I don't think these documents are going to answer the, the overall question of, do we want to do it or not? And I, I think in some respects, we have to answer that question, just to receive clarity at a staff level, to move forward or not to move forward. Because the, the documents are in order.
Okay. This is my first run at this, so, I haven't, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff in there that, like you said, it's, it's their grant and their money, but it's just kind of overwhelming when you're reading through the different things. So, that's why I just wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable, just like Tim said too. I was going to remember, Tim.
It's a lot of money. It's being given to you by a governmental entity to a governmental entity. They want to make sure that the use satisfies a public purpose. We've spent some time talking about that. And then, there's just the checks and balances to make sure that it's used appropriately and that it's, you know, which is all above board, which is not a problem, we're an open book entity here. So, no, I, I view the document to be largely in order. I think it's a good point. There's some, some wording issues in here that maybe we could clean up a little bit. I think the, from time to time on the legislative side, I understand the objection to that. Candidly, I've not ever seen that become a problem, but I think things like that can be cleaned up if, if that's, if it's those sorts of things that are the, you know, heartache on this, that, that, to me, is easy enough to fix. I think there's still the bigger question out there, but those are easy.
And the years for me, you know, we had it, we had it, and it was open, and it's closed for many years, so it's, the years of, and that's where I was kind of hoping to get a, a clearer, for that kind of money, what, what's expected. But, it sounds like we can give them an idea of what we think.
Yeah. I, I think that's exactly it. What are you comfortable with? You know, at some point, it needs to be an affirmative statement. Here's what I would like.
Everything else is drawn out so tight legally, I would think, the years, so that's what was kind of confusing to me.
It's my understanding that a useful life is an estimate of the building, so, then, would that have been in the WOLD report? And is that something they can revisit?
Sure they can.
Because they're the ones that determined our original useful life, if I'm remembering correctly.
We can ask them about that, absolutely.
I think it's one of those things where it's, it's, there's a lot of factors at play, and, yeah, it's, it can vary, it sounds like, depending on the condition of the building.
I just appreciate going over. I mean, we came in after the grant was asked for, and now, we didn't know the stipulation, so now that we, you know, understand some more, you know, for it, so we're, you know, the three new members have been trying to catch up and understand it, so I appreciate everybody's patience and just to understand where we were at. It's like coming in, you know, bottom of the eighth, you're pitching, what's the score? I don't know, just throw the ball. So, that's, now I want to get some information, find out, you know, and I appreciate that we're able to, to talk as a group with this and understand a little more. So, it was very, very helpful.
And, just like Soren was saying, once a grant agreement or a grant application has been submitted by Brian, because that's basically a rough draft, again, I will put it into a grant agreement, but I have to give it to you, because eventually, you're going to sign it. But what I typically do is I give it to you, and maybe the whole board looks it over. There may be some language in there you want to change. There may be, you know, different things, oh, we don't like this, could it be this? And then, it comes back. And then, in most cases, dealing with MMB, they're pretty reasonable. Yep, that's fine. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, MMB, what is?
MMB is Minnesota Management and Budget.
Okay. It doesn't have to go back to the legislature at all, if we decide, hey, we would like to do 15, 20 years, it is not like over.
No. It wouldn't go to the legislature.
So, they didn't pass anything off of the time period or anything like that?
Only time it goes back to legis, legislation.
Is like you move, like you said.
If you're going to make a major change.
Okay. That helps clear it up, too.
Yeah. So, but otherwise, when it comes to the funding itself, because after everything is done and said, and we're kind of moving along, I will go back to, I'll just call them MMB, but Minnesota Management and Budget, and they, and I'll request the full funding from them. And then, that's where they give the approval that we have everything, and we move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I just did a quick Google search. The useful life of a building is an estimate of the number of years it can be used for a business to generate income and remain profitable. So...
But is a, yeah, that's more for private, not a public entity?
In essence, it's the same thing, because the usefulness of what we describe it for can change. So, that's why I do, would not want to, I would, I mean, I'm going to commit 20 years. 20 years is what I want to see on the agreement. I don't want to see anything higher than 20 years.
25 with the formula.
25 with the formula. So, I guess I'm asking the three of you to say, to, to make a commitment to years as well, so we can get off of this point.
Well, if it's not 30, then 25, I mean, I guess my question is, what is the justification behind that?
The justification is that it shortens the amount of the agreement time that we have with the state. It limits the number of years that we have to, to match any state, state funding. So, the smaller the number, the better.
2012 is when it closed, 1992 is when it started, so that's 20 years, as far as how it was, how long it was open before it closed. Just kind of looking at the number there, can't, can't remember how many years it was open.
I think it's important to look into the past, and I would also say that this community is changing dramatically, and the population is going up quite a bit. So, I think it's worthwhile for either city staff or consultant to really look into what a model, a feasible model would look like. And if 25 years is a comfortable number that we can start with, I think that's, you know, something we'd need a consultant to kind of give us a little bit more guidance or a project manager. But I hesitate to just look at the past and, and say that's the... But I hesitate to just look at the past and, and say that's the future of the community center. I just don't think that, um, can speak to, um, what is today.
And again, as far as, as far as useful life, you know, 20 years of useful life after you've, uh, you know, put the construction dollars in there to do, the envelope of your facility is not out of line. Um, most facilities usually are estimated having a 40 to 50 year lifespan. Obviously, if you go into downtown St. Paul, you're gonna see facilities that are well beyond that. So, a 20-year useful life is not out of, out of line, which then translates to 25. I do have a, a question as far as, um, what constitutes a default, the event of a default? So, I'm gonna give an example. We go with the grant, we've accepted the money, we've done everything. We're entering year six and we no longer are able to provide the programming that was agreed to in the agreement. Are we in default?
I think it would depend. And the reason why I say that is, it is making me think about, um, one that I'm currently kind of dealing with and it's just kind of in the air. And it was one of the, what is it called? Minne- Minneapolis Schumpert, I think it is. And they're basically, uh, like an opera or symphony. And now they're funding, they're not making money anymore. And they, they borrowed so much money, but the income's not coming in anymore. So, they just kind of have it on hold. They never really said if it was a default or not, because there's a reason, because they're not bringing in income. So, it's kind of shutting down, they're looking for somebody else to take over. And that's about the closest that I've come to anybody not being able to move on. But I've not really come across that, I would say. So, I would have to double check on that as well.
On, onto that. And then if you are in the event of a default, then it goes to the section 2.06, which, B, which talks about the remedy, where the commissioner of MMB, um, then can, you know, uh, demand a portion of the grant that's been dispersed at this point in time. It would be the full grant. Can they do the full grant or is it somehow amortized, at least on a straight line basis, for the useful life that has been used? Or is it gonna be the full grant amount? And the same condition then falls underneath in the event of year five, 10, whatever, the city decided to sell the facility with the proceeds of the sale. Right now, how it is, is that, uh, the proceeds of the sale, per, per the grant, all the sale, all the proceeds of the sale up to the amount of the grant would go back to the state. If, in the event that the price of the sale was less than the grant funds, it's a wash. The city would not owe any more money. But again, I would be asking, is there some sort of, it'd have language in there that it's at least amortized over the, the portion?
I know if you were to sell it, um, the state would ask for money back.
Correct, and it states it in there, up to the amount, but if, if the sale, if the net proceeds of the sale were less than the amount of the grant, that's all the state would get and the state wouldn't come after the city for any more. At least that's how I interpret, um, proceeds from a sale. But again, clarification on to that. To me, that's where the number of years becomes some sort of a concern for a risk factor of how long you have a programming or how long you're, you're complying with what the intent of this grant is. And what are the tails that, from a financial standpoint, that the, um, the state can come back at the city for? It's not, I think the 20 years is very reasonable, um, but yeah.
Anything? Twenty years?
That's my number, but 20 becomes 25. Uh, and again, in my definition, that doesn't mean that whatever the community center becomes would go away at the end of that time period. It just ends the regulatory period that we're held accountable by the state for the funds.
So, in other words, what Councilmember Cole was saying is that if you could get 10 years and it was, and it was 12 and a half for the thing, you would take that. Because, again, that's where the, during that timeframe, and that's where my question's on the defaults, because that's where the city's at risk.
The state could come back and challenge that as well.
Yep.
So, that's why I just went with the lowest number I thought we could probably get away with.
For mine, it becomes this, but then there's also that, whatever shortfall it is between what the actual grant is and what it's gonna take to, to do it. As far as that, and so, for me, it's, I, I'm not interested in the grant as far as that. So, that's where I'm at.
Excuse me, can you restate that?
Sure. Cause what it, the grant is, is, you know, by the time you get it up, we're still a couple million dollars short.
One, less than a couple million dollars?
Okay, 1.7, whatever it is, so, that's, uh, and how much we've gone through as far as different things we have coming up, as far as the other buildings and things like that, I, uh, I'm one, one of the votes, so, as we all are, so that's where I'm comfortable, so.
I hear that. I think, um, the 1.7 million dollars is a large amount. If we look at it at a one-time payment, which I think, um, we're looking at an extended, long-term plan. So, the grant is about renovation, so the remaining funds are renovation funds for the building. Does that, and then my understanding is, we're gonna do this deferred maintenance plan in phases, um, likely. So, wouldn't that stretch over 30 years instead of just a one-time 1.7 million dollars as it was stated in the last session, uh, workshop? Cause that just leaves $53,667 per year for renovations, if we break it down that way for 30 years. Does that, does that make sense in terms of the financials?
Then there's the other maintenance and other stuff right from the beginning. You're gonna be taking care of a building. A building's dying as soon as you build it, so, you know, as far as maintenance and things like that, so.
I, I believe that was put into the deferred maintenance pa- plan as well?
No.
When you're referring to, uh, deferred maintenance plan, is that the one that WOLD had put together? Yeah, I haven't looked at it that closely, but I think you're, you're correct, at least. But again, I don't know how they've got it divided, whether it's short-term, medium, how, how many years it included everything, but...
And, and I don't suspect that we put all of that money on, on our residence as a levy. I think there are many avenues in which we've not even explored. We have opioid settlement funds we've not discussed here. We have over a million dollars sitting in the general fund unallocated. We have opportunities for grants through public infrastructure grants, sustaining, sustainable building retrofit grants, place-making grants, Met Council grants, community violence prevention grants, um, public-private partnerships. What does rentals look like? Um, foundations, nonprofits. A resident last time said, you know, put solar panels, that's part of, you know, what the legislation said. Can we sell back the excess? We're, we're looking at it from a levy explicit way and I don't think that is sustainable at all. What needs to be explored is multiple avenues of funding, because that's much more viable. If you look at, again, Central Park in Woodbury, they have over 20 funding streams, for funding their building. So, I think that we need to be a little bit more intentional about where we're getting our funds from, and that's gonna take work, but, um, the trade-off would be, uh, I mean, we, there's, there's money that we've not even discussed. The allocation of.
And also part of those, everybody, when we name off these other places, they're real parks. This is just a little building that has no outside grounds and little parking. It's, it's not a, a, a park. It doesn't have anything much to offer as far as like a regular, um, Central Park or Conway Park or stuff like that too. To me, it's, a lot of it is just good money going after bad. So, that's my feeling.
Can you, can you explain what bad means?
Well, it, it, it's not feasible for, for, to have a big outdoor park. Like if this building was at Casey Park, it'd be a completely different thing. Right now, it's just a little wedge that the city had up there and there's, there's really no parking outside. There's no outside spaces. So, to me, the building was very limited when they built it and they built it in a poor spot. And for us to have that kind of money, plus put more money in, is, I don't, I don't see that. And some of the emails I've been getting from people, also, we all get, you know, emails from different people and so, that's where I sit at it.
I think, um, again, that's, that's making, um, we, we don't have enough information. I, I go back to needing more information around feasibility. We haven't even assessed, um, what is nearby, what is popular, what are people coming for? I think that we are not looking broadly enough and we don't have all the information to make a really important decision. We're talking about 5.3 million dollars. That's a lot of money. So, um, I think we need to really take this and dig in and learn a little bit more. We haven't done the community engagement component, as we had promised the public that we would have several of these before making a determination. So, there's just a lot of information that I am needing and I still need to make a better decision. But to, for me, I, I, I can't make a decision based off of what I have.
And for me tonight, well, this is awesome dialogue. This wasn't the intent. The intent was to check the box on one portion of what it's gonna require and what we're comfortable with. So, regardless of the outcome, my goal was that we're comfortable, we can move the, move the ball forward, at least getting some of the wording changed, tweaked, amended, um, you know, and then continuing, and then continue that bait. Funding has, we're being asked, we're discussing your comfort level with the grant, not whether you accept it or not. It's your comfort level. And what you're not comfortable with, please, please express that so that it can be changed or tweaked. This may go one way, it may go another, so.
I thought I did that when I, when I said that the, they kind of go hand in hand, because we can't have the grant without, you know, being able to finish what, what is entailed, so that's where.
So, you've, so, so that's not my definition of being comfortable with the grant, with the grant wording. You're not comfortable with all of the funding.
To me, they go hand in hand, so. That's where I sit on it. You can't have one without the other.
I guess my point is, we don't know what the other funds are coming, are coming from. We're making an assumption that it's coming from the tax, like taxing our residents and that's not necessarily true and it doesn't have to be. But that definitely does take some work into looking into what is feasible for us. What is out there besides taxing our residents? I would much rather look at grants and other avenues than taxing our residents. Cause I too am about to tax myself out of this community, so. Yeah, and I'm one of them too. So, if we can be a little bit more innovative and creative about where our money is coming from, I think then, um, we can learn a little bit more about whether 1.7 million dollars over 30 years is feasible.
I guess I'm stuck on the 30 years of being, how does it finish? I mean, for them, they gave us a, a, a thing to fix the building of 7.3 million dollars. Is that correct?
I think so. My understanding is we have 5.3 million dollars from the state and federal government. They've given that to us, they've passed legislation. We have that if we apply for it. And the remainder is an estimate of what the remaining costs would be after adjusting for inflation and different changes, cause it started out at 2 million and has now jumped up to seven. So, that is just the remaining gap for the deferred maintenance plan that was presented by WOLD. And that was over 30 years. And that's what I'm referring to.
See, I thought the way it was looking, it was the 7 point, that's what it was gonna be to get the building up to where it was without doing anything on the inside, pretty much. Is that, am I mistaken on that? 7.3 to bring it back to where it was in 1992?
I believe that's correct. I don't know if it's over time or not, that's the part. I don't know how long of a timeframe that WOLD had put it together, if they had, that was multiple years, if that was a 10-year look, 15-year look, 20-year look.
And I wasn't there when it passed, so that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not sure that part to it, but I do remember, I, I do think you're correct on the other part. I don't, I believe there was very little for interior renovations that was included in their estimate.
Correct. Any else?
So, I'd, I'd actually like our attorney to, to rephrase something that he said earlier, because I think he hit the nail on the head. It's not necessarily the terms of the grant that need to be discussed and decided. It's, do we really want to move forward with this or, or not? And that's kind of where we're, you know, we're having, and I'll, I'll give it over to Soren cause he said it so eloquently.
No, I, I mean, this is something Brian and I have talked about a number of times, cause I think, from my perspective, and I'll speak on my behalf, not on Brian or anyone else's, there's confusion on what to do next. So, um, I appreciate Councilmember Cole bringing this forward, saying, hey, let's talk about the agreement, agreement. Let's work through that, so that if the agreement is the sticking point, let's unstick it so we can move forward. If, if the agreement isn't the sticking point, if that's just sort of, hey, we're not really in favor of moving forward with it, so we'll look into the agreement and see if there's issues in there, I would put the agreement aside. I feel like from my perspective, there needs to be a step back. Do we want to do this or not? And we need to start to figure that out, because at a staff level, we want your direction. And even tonight, I'm hearing mult, not just for and against, but multiple opinions, more information, sort of, hey, let's at least talk about moving forward the grant agreement, not in favor of the grant agreement. I'm not sure, if we want more information, it would help to be specific about what we want. That's a fair request. But we're, we're looking for some pretty specific direction at this point. And I, I feel like we're floundering a little bit with lack of a, a majority on, hey, let's go do this. So, that would be helpful. And if I've missed the mark with my comments, I'm certainly willing to receive that feedback. But I, I think at a high level, that's what we're looking for.
I would agree with you.
I, I guess I have a question for everybody. In, in the short time exploring my own feelings here, um, some of the things I think Lisa said, I, I very much agree with. For me, I guess the first question I would have to ask myself is, if we took this 5.3 million and we found a bunch of other funding where we could guarantee that there was no tax burden for our residents for the next 20, 25 years, is that the right location to use that grant money? For me, I'm not 100% sure that it is. I, I'm not against it. You know, and there's something to be said with already having a facility there. So, i- is that the first conversation we need to have? Is, i- if all the stars align, we found some grant money, wouldn't cost our residents anything, is the current former community center the right? anything, is the current former community center the right place to have that kind of monetary investment? Or were we just going down that road because that's what it used to be for that location? I- is that the first question that needs to be answered?
I don't mean to speak out of turn, but it seems like the feedback I've heard most of all is the concern of the financial obligations that we'll have to this when there are so many obligations that we are looking at that are coming down the road right now. That seems to be the most feedback I hear from either public or any conversations I have with it. So, now we're not even talking necessarily about the community center. So, there are lots of issues and lots of angles that we need to figure out.
And I absolutely agree with that. I was, my question more was, let's say, Lisa went out and found us another 5 million worth of grants. Not that it should be her job to do it, but we all went out and found us another 5 million in grants. So, we had, and obviously, I'm pulling stuff out of thin air, but if we had 10 million in grants that doesn't cost our residents anything, is the current location of the community center the smart choice to put that money? Or would we want to build something on Casey Lake? You know, or somewhere else where there's parking or better infrastructure? So, if we, if we take the levy component out for our residents, i- is the current location the smart choice?
I guess, again, that's, that's information I would want from a city staff or a project managers to do that, that homework, to get the lay of the land. Is McKnightfield a better option? It was my understanding that this group here, we did not want to sell the building, which would be...
Excuse me, not at the time I, yeah, we were talking about.
Since we started conversations?
Yeah, I mean, that was in there, where, you know, at this time, we're looking forward, you know, to see what we can do with it at that time.
Okay, so, that was, again, that still takes a lot more information on what is feasible. And then it also would require legislative change, which means we need to go back to our representative to make those changes and advocate for those. So, it kind of is one of those things where, again, I need a bigger picture, a much more comprehensive look before just making a decision.
Sorry to interrupt. We have two minutes until 6:30, so I don't know.
I'm going to accomplish this right now.
So, I just wanted to be mindful of the time.
One of the questions brought here today was, what, what does that Wold money mean? What does it all encompass? For the next workshop, would it be fair to ask for a more detailed summary of that Wold proposal, what that seven, all the money of the Wold proposal does? And also, some proposals for Councilmember Wong's? What would a outside, what did you call them?
Project manager?
Consultant, project manager. What would that cost? So, my opinion is that's what we asked staff for direction for, for the next meeting, is the summary of the money. So, we have a, what did all this money mean? What does it fix? What are we left with? And then a cost of a consultant or a project manager to help us better justify the 5.3. That would be what my feeling for the direction of the staff is.
The staff probably definitely could deliver the Wold summary report as far as an estimate. It's going to be a pretty wild estimate because we actually would have to go off for an RFP and so forth because we're not really sure what that, that estimate would be. We would never have that ready for the next city council, and we would have to draft an RFP, and I'm not the person who would be drafting that. But we would want to have city council review it, no different than we did with the RFI in the past, and then it would hit the streets. So, that, that part of it would take a little bit, and I think we've kind of acknowledged that, and because we want to make sure that we're encompassing and asking a consultant for all the services that, you know, have been identified and making sure we're not missing anything, so we're not going back again. Because this consultant right now, you know, to me, after this conversation, which has been a fantastic conversation tonight, has opened up, I think, the scope of services for a consultant because they're going to have to assist us in trying to find out other revenue streams as far as grants and so forth, and, and that to levy or to minimize any levy impact it would have on our residents. Because that seemed to be a very critical component that was discussed tonight.
Can I ask, do current staff have the capacity to look into further information, the scope of information that we need?
I guess I would ask for feedback for specific information. You've, you've brought up, you know, public feedback. I know Dr. Waldron had advertised that. We opened that up to the public. They came in. We asked for feedback on our website. We asked for feedback on our newsletter. So, I mean, if you could say what you're really specifically looking for, if we're not covering that, that would be helpful.
So, what I can do is share maybe a community center feasibility study with you from maybe another city, and you can kind of look at all the different components of, of what that's made of. It kind of looks at the scope of what services are in the region, so we're competitive or not. It looks at our changing demographics. It looks at all those different components so we can make a little bit more informed decision. But it's, 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 there's a lot to it.
Sure. That'd be helpful.
I think that would be a good, good...
Please.
Yeah, and we could actually reach out to that, whatever entity that was, to see if they, you know, had an RFP or whatever, too. Be very helpful.
So, at this point, we're looking to get quotes of what that would cost, correct?
Okay.
That's all we'll do.
adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, we're past...
So moved.
Call, what?
Oh.
Oh, did you do it already? Motion adjourned, please.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We can have two minutes.